Got it all sorted? Alright, call to order the operations committee meeting. Molly, do we know who iPad is?
She's changing into Albert, he's the line consultant.
Okay, currently here in the media center, we have Mel Campbell and Tricia Fidrich and myself on the operations committee. Earl Campbell, another board member, David Strippinger is joining online. We have Mr. Robert Otting from communications, Freddie Lawton with Carol Crutchfield, and Robert Corbin and Kelly presenters. Do we have any public comments? Is it flesh first or just my first meeting councilor? Alright, let's stand for the line.
And let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments? Is it first? Okay. Oh, public comment down there, yes. It's actually sitting next to me.
I note that we approved the operations committee agenda for February 9th, 2022.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that was unanimously, and now my moment has arrived. Corbin, are there any public comments? For civil effect. Alright, so the first order is to approve the January 12th, 2022 committee meeting minutes.
I'm gonna have to slow down for just a second.
Want to keep a brief pitch?
Uh, my fingers don't type. I'm asking you to talk. Alright, here we go.
Alright, so do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
I note that we approve the January 12th, 2022 committee meeting minutes.
Second, Campbell's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Two ayes, one abstention. Mel Campbell is the abstention. Okay, whenever you're ready, we'll do the, have the presentation from the county.
So your camera is there, so right here is a good spot, and there may be some watching.
Okay, and we do, I think, have a couple slides of PDFs, so if you have opportunity to pull that up. Thank you, committee, for having us. My name is Jared Frilitz, I'm assistant county administrator over the engineering division. So all things traffic and infrastructure, or to Robert in his capacity, but just on the county level and roads and everything else. So again, thank you for having us, I wanted to talk to you all about what we have planned out in the area off of 170 and specific there at WK Austin as it relates to the school there. So, so as we're looking at this area, we just, Beaufort County as well as the city of Beaufort both have jurisdictions in this 170 corridor. It's a growth corridor plan for future commercial. You can see already some of that starting to take place that's going on right now. DOT has actually just did some minor safety improvements, and it's both called out in our comprehensive plans as well as in the LRTA, so long range technical plan, traffic impact plan for the area through our NPO. So this is set up for that, and what we're trying to do is take a look at this and be proactive versus reactive in planning for growth in our traffic patterns in Beaufort County, and specifically this part of the northern 17, SC 170. There's a lot of properties out there, commercial properties that are starting to turn over, and we thought it was beneficial for us to coordinate with the city of Beaufort. Let's put a pen on paper on what we want this traffic to look like. In any well-programmed traffic management plan, the idea is the safe move access of people and goods. And the way you do that is preserve the corridor in its capacity and its safety enhancements by also providing alternate means and methods for those vehicles to get around the corridor in the area. So what that looks like for us on paper is having an access road network parallel to main road to give relief to the main road. So if you need to get to a left turn, have those left turns collect on minor roads to get to a major road signal intersection. That's the safest out, and then also safety in and safety out as far as access is concerned. So these are, those are just a list of some of the projects, known projects that are out there. So you see five big projects here, apartment complex on 170, some medical office building, some more apartments, a big retail center across from Walmart, and then some additional apartments down on Old Jericho. So these are what's known and what the city has or what the county has kind of in the hopper, as well as some other stuff that we were able to compile. So you'll see that on some of our planning that we have, so if you scroll to the next slide. And maybe do it just a little bit. If you can center that off, move a little bit and it goes live. I'll talk, but as she's, as she's centering it. So what we're doing is we're trying to space out the signals, so it's in a, in a about one half mile spacing. That's the optimum spacing on the 170 corridor based off the traffic and the speed out there. The more we can preserve that, the better we can collect cars at a, at a routine basis, and we don't have as much stop and go. We also maintain the traffic speed out there. It's 45 and then it gets to 55 right past WK Austin. So we want to preserve speed as much as we can, but we also want to make sure the speed stays constant through a certain corridor. So as you can see, we have existence signals. This is in black here. Is this the signal at Joe Frazier and Broad River? Is this the signal at Paris Island Gateway and 170? And now the newly installed signal at WK Austin. So right now, this is approximately a half mile in this spacing, so it's actually set up quite nice. But then as we're looking, what is the next one? Just off the screen is the next signal, current existence signal, which is a W, or excuse me, Castle Rock. So when we start looking at signal spacing and we kind of put it in half mile, it starts kind of laying that out for us, but then we start putting that back into, does this make sense? Is this appropriate location? And if you can go up a little bit. So signal spacing is, is one of the big things that we looked at. We just, like I said, we took all the data that we knew, we took all the modeling that we knew, and tried to plug that in and see what makes sense as far as getting people safe access. So right here at WK Austin, this is installed, so this would be a future proposed signal up here as well. And, and this is, would be, so this was Joe Frazier. So the idea in the long range plan that we're last has is for widening right here on Joe Frazier. So there's a collection of traffic from Haversham and Laurel Bay all coming down Joe Frazier, but there's not a great access. They started to disperse and go through the neighborhood. If you're driven back there, there's no direct access to 170. So trying with that, that in mind, how do we make it correct access? Also across is Goofy Hill, when 170 got installed, Goofy Hill got cut off, and it kind of does this loop around over here. So in trying to connect those two types of traffic, potentially you have somebody who's up here north of Broad River that they could actually bypass the whole 170 corridor if they're trying to get to Paris Island Gateway by punching through here and then realigning Goofy Hill such that it keybonds into this signal and thus create another avenue. As well as on the back side, so you can start to see, and we'll get into the next screen where you can start to see some of these laid out proposed developments. So this is Walmart, and this is the proposed development. So again, tying into Goofy Hill and starting to have some interconnectivity. These red and white lines, these are, are basically schematic. So what we're saying here is, hey, hey developer, when you come in and develop your lot, we intend to have some type of access road there. It doesn't necessarily have to look like that, but we want to maintain that we can get connection from this signal to that signal. So as you come in, we'll work with you, but be it known that there's a plan out there that's prescribed and stamped by all that we're creating this access network. And again, the whole purpose of that is to take relief off of 170, maintain that capacity as much as we can, and also provide safe access to our intersections. So if you go to the next, next slide, you get a closer in view of what we're talking about, and specifically as it gets closer to WK Austin. So these, again, these are, are plans that are out there, whether they actually end up looking like this or not, that's to be determined. But these are, this, what you guys will recognize is what we were able to grab as y'all's future plans at WK Austin. So the buildings start coming off the road and, and some of the, the ball fields are up closer to the road. This is a future apartment complex back here behind Walmart. This is a, a medical office kind of plan in this, some more apartment complexes over here, and more commercial across from Walmart. So regardless whether we do any improvements or not, this, there's growth coming. So there's really not an option just to be idle. The, the opportunity now, we have a small window to ensure that we create this access network such that we're not in a much more difficult situation once the growth takes here. We haven't done anything, and now we're trying to figure out how do we get out of this traffic jam on 170. So we're trying to prevent that as much as possible. So the most notable points, as you see these roads, these are just, again, lines on paper. It's just trying to say that we're trying to develop this access. So as you come through here, WK Austin is a DOT owned road, but the school district does own the right of way or the land on both sides of the road. So currently DOT installed this signal, and as you see, it's got the big bulb out. And they also installed, this is, it's called R-Cuts, it's a safety mechanism to make sure you can't turn left out, right, right out only. So that bulb out would go away when this gets developed, you would have a full access in. On, on WK Austin, you also have a diverge right there in the median as you come onto that. So initially, there was going to be some improvements required if this alignment didn't happen in this manner. But this property right here, for what they have drawn and submitted to DOT and the city of Beaufort, they have a divided median as well, so it matches up well with what's out there. Which is great because there's some live specimen trees that, that are out there in the medians. So the big things to note right here is, is the interconnectivity. So when you start connecting this road, it's got to connect here, but DOT has, again, this is a DOT owned network. We're just trying to facilitate and work with DOT as best we can so that it's safe for everybody, all the drivers in the area. But they have rules on how far away that driveways can be from a signal, and that's just their standard policy. It's, it's not something that they really allow variances on. So that's why these, these connecting roads show up. When you do that, you also, how do you connect this type of road into it if you can't connect here? And that's why it's just schematically drawn there, as well as, obviously, this is Walmart. I think there's been previous discussions about options like this. But now even more so with the safety improvements done by DOT, there's going to be continued pressure on, on connectivity. And then just to the, if you can go down just a little bit. Pull it, pull down just a bit. And I'm sorry, I forgot I'm pointing to the screen. For those of you online, I'm sure it's hard to follow, so I apologize for that. So up here, this is the, the proposed apartment complex, and then again, the proposed entrance which retains the existing entrance. So this is aligning that, what they do get here is a signal, so making safe access. And, and there's been discussions with the city and the apartment complex about there's most likely going to be kids at that school getting to this school, how do you make safe access? So there will be a, make sure that there's safe access up at the signal so they can get across. Additional things to look at, and, and I know in talking with the school district, it's always important that, hey, what is this going to do to the school and the kids and the impact on this? So if we don't do anything, travel, traffic's still going to come here. Now that there's a signal that's been installed by DOT, more, more traffic from up on Joe Frazier, and whether this development takes place is going to travel down this road regardless, because that's where the signal is. If we connect the interconnection, then we can disperse that traffic. So the person that was going to come down Joe Frazier and now they're trying to get to the signal, if there's a signal at Joe Frazier, then they bypass WK Austin, and, and that traffic is not on this road. So even though specifically some of this doesn't affect the school district, the interconnectivity does affect the, the flow overall and helps disperse traffic and get to the signal. Additionally, things that we can look at and integrate into the plan and call out, and this is where I'd really like input from you all, is things that are important to y'all as far as walkability or pathways. We have a lot of pathways that we're developing as part of our current sales tax program, and our, we recently adopted a master plan, pedestrian and bicycle master plan. So in doing that, that would be coordination, what we can fit within the existing right of way, what trees are out there? Is there opportunity to sway that pathway which would then be on, on school property? But in doing that, we can coordinate and develop that and, and potentially craft a future sidewalk project out of that if, if desired. So, and then lastly, the last page is, is another snapshot. So again, this shows just the interconnectivity and how it works throughout the whole area. So the red lines, again, just highlighting the interconnectivity between different parcels. So anyhow, that's what the county's working towards, we're, we're seeking input. And whatever input that you guys have, we'd love to hear from you all, what that looks like, things you like, things you don't like. And then from that, whether you want to talk back and forth, or whether you want, Steve Andrews, he's the engineer that we've commissioned to help us on this, but he also is playing another role, speaking from a different app. He's also working with some of the developers on these parcels. So specifically the, the apartment complex up front, he's working with, with the developer on that. But fortunately, we're, we're at a point in planning that we still have opportunity to, to make good traffic design prior to develop and being reactive. So the opportunity to be proactive still exists, and again, looking for any input that you all will have as we develop this plan and, and basically present it to both our council, city council and county council.
Thank you. Well, if there are questions, Ms. Fidrich?
Thank you very much, appreciate you coming in and showing us some of these updated drawings and some of the plans. And I, and thank you for expressing, you know, what your mission is. You want lower traffic, you want people to have, you know, different ways to get to Robert Smalls Parkway and so on. But, you know, our mission is to keep our kids safe, because there's a lot of traffic over that way. And, and I'm glad DOT put that stoplight in right there on Robert Smalls. So in this particular image you have right here, my area of concern is your red dotted line that goes right past what would be our football field. Okay, and as I was, was reviewing this prior to today's meeting, that looks to me like that empties into the bus loop?
It, yes, it does, in this version, yes.
So I have concerns about that. So, so if you're trying to get people off Robert Smalls Parkway and onto that parallel road, but that empties into our bus loop.
Yep.
And I'm not sure what else. Is there any teacher parking in there? Would there be in between the bus loop?
Yeah, there's.
There's a small amount for the kitchen service, yeah, in the back, back here, that's about it. But it's not really, yeah, there's not any large public park. Because that is also our kitchen service access.
Kitchen service access.
Yeah.
So that concerns me greatly. And I, I don't see where that would be a wise move, at least twice a day. At least twice a day, mornings and afternoons. What, what is the distance between that proposed road and football field? I can't tell. What, what distance are we looking at?
Right here?
No, back to the football field.
Oh, here?
What is that distance?
I don't know that distance right off. I don't know if Steve does. That is, I believe, shown not just off of the county property, school property, and that's on private property as, as reflected.
Well, we're seeing.
Do you have any idea on the distance about that?
Not the distance, but that's accurate. The proposed roads on the majority property.
On the majority property, yeah. You know, this is K8, this is kindergarten.
Right.
Through eighth grade, it's not high school.
Yep.
It's not just middle school. So I strongly object to that dumping animals in our bus loop.
Yeah, and, and one thing, and we knew that would probably be a comment. And it's that right there, I think everybody could probably look at and just say that's difficult.
Yeah.
All the way around.
Yeah.
And, and you can see on the southern side, they actually have a roundabout into the shopping center. And that could be a feasible alternative if you had. If you had a, a roundabout there, then you have, you can enter a roundabout in various locations. It doesn't have to be a T intersection.
Right.
So that could be plausible. That'd be something we have to coordinate with DOT as well. And that's what, the reason that's there today, as reflected, that's our best guess on what DOT would allow. Because we've got to not only satisfy the school district and, and the county and, and city procurement or ordinance, but we also got to coordinate with DOT. So it's a, it's a group effort and coming to a, a solution that makes sense for all.
And that, that route, that road couldn't just have continued and turned at a 90 degree right?
Like if you went straight in?
No, go down to Robert Smalls.
Right here.
Right through that medical complex.
Um, it could potentially, but the, what you lose in that is the opportunity to get these folks to that signal. Now, they still could potentially have access to this signal, and that's what we can work with DOT on. DOT is reviewing this as well concurrently and giving us their feedback.
Yeah.
They're in full support typically of having as much access to signals as possible.
Sure.
But we're waiting to hear some of their feedback. So it is definitely something, more than likely, as, as a corridor develops, and you look at safety enhancements, the median gets restricted. So you start eliminating left turns, so not everybody can make a left turn out of driveway, and the left turns start stacking at an intersection, at a fully signalized intersection. So when that happens, there's a fair chance in the future that that would be a right in, right out only.
Mm-hmm.
So if this person wanted to get to school, their only feasible way would have to go back this way, which doesn't say they can't do that, but that's just, it's a good comment and we can, we can coordinate with DOT as well.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. What is the value in terms of, what's the distance between Paris Island Gateway, which is cutting, you know, you've got, what is that, Broad River, which is running parallel to 170, right? Do I have the names right?
Um, Broad River and 170, you have parallel.
So you're going to have Paris Island Gateway, and then you're going to have Joe Frazier, and you're basically looking to have WK Austin intersect that in the middle. What's the difference, the distance between Joe Frazier and Paris Island Gateway?
From Joe Frazier and Paris Island Gateway?
Yeah.
Back up there? This is about a half a mile here, and this is a half mile. So from here to there would be a whole lot.
So basically, because my concern is just cutting through the school envelope in order, when you've already got two roads that are fairly substantial with lights, isn't, you know, really going to have that much impact on traffic flow?
This right here, WK Austin?
Yes.
So that signal is there and it's not going to come out. So there's going to be continued need until there's other signals, there's going to be an influx of traffic until there's a relief for people not to use WK Austin.
So I drove there today as school was letting out. It's a one lane road when school's letting out.
Yeah.
In addition to which, a lot of the time, it's going to be a 25 mile an hour school zone.
Yeah.
So I don't think it's going to be a high choice unless there was some big advantage. And I think if you've got these two lanes, I mean, is it really necessary to have that one in the middle if you've got Joe Frazier and Paris Island Gateway? And they can absorb a lot of, of that traffic. Because school zones, to me, from a, not from a traffic flow perspective, but we really need to respect the envelope of the school. Because you've got kids running with lights, the K through eight, that's a lot of kids, a lot of parents picking up, a lot of congestion twice a day. So if they, if, there would have to be a pretty high bar to me to divert that traffic. I don't see a lot of people bypassing Joe Frazier or Paris Island to come down WK Austin. And it's, you know, it's a tricky road. It's got trees, it's blind, doesn't feel like to cut through.
Right.
It feels like an extended driveway.
Well, even the, even the parents that are picking up those students, those K through eights, having, again, that signal's not going to go anywhere, especially now with the future development there. The question would be if there's a signal up there, that would be determined. So having a signalized intersection is, is safe for the parents picking up as much as it is for anybody that's going to use that traffic. So it's the track, what I guess what I'm trying to say is, the traffic's going to come there regardless whether we do improvements or not, specifically now that there's a signal there. And so our, our best avenue is to, how do we protect that school zone? And by doing that, sometimes it's not by improvements on the road, it's improvements elsewhere. So by making improvements elsewhere helps protect that 25 mile an hour zone, even though we didn't necessarily do any improvements on WK Austin. Help, the more we can disperse the traffic, otherwise traffic's going to find its way to the easiest path out. As this gets more developed here, all this commercial is going to be continually harder to get out and make a left turn or a right turn. So it's kind of like water, it's going to find a path, at least in behavioral, traffic rule, you know which road you can turn out of and not turn out of.
Well, and to my, you know, I don't know how much traffic gets right now, but if you connect Walmart parking lot, because that parking lot's huge and it's a pain, so people are going to want to cut through that, then you've got this thing connecting through into our bus loop, which we're already concerned about.
Right.
They've already talked about adding easements. So you're talking about the intention. And I think that is a problem. And I don't know how you would do that without widening the road, putting a lot of safety. I just don't think it's a great road to use as an offset for Frazier and Paris Island. That would be my initial, I mean, I understand what you're saying about the traffic's going to be there, but traffic will be discouraged if there's a backup of cars that pick up in 25 mile an hour zones and, and that sort of thing. I don't see any other, hands up. Mr. Smith or Mr. Campbell, do you have questions?
Um, no, I don't have a question. I just, as far as the traffic is coming from Robert Smalls, to go to Paris Island Gateway, they're going to have to go down and take the back way to come around. So, you know, and that's what we're doing now. That's, that's not going to change.
And you're putting the median, correct? Down one second, I heard that.
So, so right now, there's not, so medians usually come after, it's kind of like a reactive result. So right now, DOT just, DOT was the one that did the safety project. And so DOT was the one that installed that median. So however, though, there, that is a safety enhancement to the major corridor. And so over time, there would be a fair assessment that a median would be installed.
So number six, SC 170 apartments. Those are not built yet, right?
Yeah, Steve, Steve was the one that compiled a lot of these apartments. So the 170 apartments, is this?
Yes.
Come up here, Steve.
So I guess I'm just asking, those aren't built yet?
That's correct.
And you've got Jennings to the north of that or west or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Okay. So why, why wouldn't you try to take some of that traffic from Jennings, alleviate some of the Broad River traffic, have them turn right onto an extension of Jennings and come right through where those apartments are going to be, because they're not built yet, and parallel WK Austin and get the traffic off of WK Austin?
So they kind of have a straight like this?
Or, and, and even might have to jog closer to the medical building, which is not built yet either.
Yeah.
So, I mean, in that way, we parallel WK Austin, which would give you the same effect, but I know you wouldn't then have your half mile between stoplights.
Right.
But only one stoplight is in now anyway.
Right, just, just that one, and this one's non-existent right now.
Yeah. So I mean, I don't know, was that a consideration? Instead of dumping more traffic onto the school envelope, to use your term, because other things are not even built yet, why can't Jennings be continued down through them and connect to Robert Smalls Parkway?
It's a, it's a possibility. So, so we have two hats. One was for the private developers.
Sure.
So, so when we look at the apartment complex, they don't own that land, but that's what that red and white stripe would, would indicate. So you can see the planned road through the apartments.
Right to the floor of the pond, right?
And then this is a conceptual to connect to.
Okay.
So physically, the, the apartments are planning on just what you're recommending, but they don't own this land. So that should, that would have to come at some point in the future.
Yes, and, and then, but why couldn't that be the parallel to Austin, come all the way down onto Robert Smalls?
So one is.
Because they do own the land where the pictures are of the apartments.
That, that's a, that's a possibility. There, there was a, a desire because of all the load coming down Joe Frazier to let that through, so it's not dispersing up and down the progress. Like that was just the, the traffic thought there to keep a straight line as possible to 270. Because you, you're dispersing, it's still sitting in the street neighborhoods, and so this would formalize that.
Okay, Mr. Stridinger?
Thank you, Mountain Chair. I am not a traffic expert. I know absolutely nothing about traffic engineering. We'll leave it to y'all to do that. Ms. Fidrich told you what our concern is. We have a K eight school, we want to keep traffic away from that school as much as possible. So y'all can figure out the best way to do that. But that is, that is our mandate to protect, you know, those are K through eight kids, and we have to protect them. So that, that's, that's all, that's what our concern is, and y'all can figure out how to do the traffic part.
Well, and, and I, this would be what I would encourage, or come back to you guys, is it is a completely ascribed to the mission that, that is the mission, to keep all the kids safe, and we ascribe to the same mission. The only difference in, in our mission is we're also looking at all the travelers, not just the, the students, but the parents and everybody alive. And then DOT, they have a separate mission as well, and they're looking at their, their box. So we're all talking the same talk, it's just a matter of how we facilitate that. So from DOT's vantage point, when they're came, when they have a development permit that asks for a driveway, they're not necessarily looking at use or nearby uses, they're looking at their immediate road and, and access to that road, to that development. So when these departments come, they're going to say, okay, yes, you can have that driveway. And then if we don't make provisions collectively as a group, then we have to live with, they not, they're not necessarily looking at all these collectively like we are here today. They're looking at them individually, like, yes, you can have driveway, yes, you can have driveway, yes, you can have driveway. And then we have a nightmare on 170. And the same thing, even on WK Austin, it's a state owned road. So they're going to be looking at this property up here and this property right here. Now, I, I don't know how that worked out, how, that was way before me, how the road bisected the property. But anyways, so they're looking at it from their standpoint individually. And what we're trying to do, and definitely hear good input from you guys on, on how we best facilitate it. But sometimes doing nothing to protect the specific group isn't necessarily the only way, or, or not necessarily the best way. The, there's ways to develop projects that accommodate all, that maybe, you know what, instead of, we are creating more traffic and a dispersion of traffic, but if we add a lane, or if we add pathways, or we add signalization, or say crosswalks, or different things like that. So that would be, I guess, what I would reply back, as we think about this together collectively, those are the different things that are kind of running through currently that we're trying to juggle.
And I would agree that, but I think that the feedback from the committee, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we need to protect the school as much as possible and, you know, make that a, a connection of last resort. Because I, I can't think of any other schools in the district where the, a major road or any kind of cut through runs right alongside the school like that. It gets, you know, usually schools have that protection for safety. So whatever other options you can look at would be good.
Okay. Well, we'll definitely do that. And if it's all right, we'd love to come back with you some additional options that, hey, we looked at this, we've got additional feedback from DOT, this is what they said, and, and see what we can put together to put our best foot forward with that. Sounds appropriate. Specifically, so this is me talking from the county, and we hired Andrews to help us on this. But then also specifically on their end, he's also representing private entities, so I'll let him talk specifically on some of the specific connections.
Okay, so Steve Andrews, back in the summer, we were here preliminarily, and, you know, asked for some more information, which we gathered that information to share with y'all. So this is the apartment complex. It looks much today like it did in the summer. It's 528 units. We've done a traffic assessment. And possibly, could you back up to the previous slide, please? That might be a better vantage point to speak from. So roll down to one of the graphics. Yeah. So we did do a traffic assessment with the connection to WK Austin, and then we did a traffic assessment without the connection to WK Austin to see what the two look like. And, and so.
And Steve, this is the, the.
You're pointing out to this one, right?
Yeah, point out which.
You're trying to pick at this one?
Yes, yes.
This one where, this is a development that is depicted right here.
It's the one behind Walmart.
Yes. So I guess this is the.
This is the, this is the one.
Is that that image?
Right here.
Yeah.
If you could let this one pull up a little bit. That's good enough, that's, this works, this works good.
Okay.
So this, this is the apartment complex in WK Austin and Broad River Road. So I'm not going to get down into the numbers because I'm not a traffic engineer, but I can sort of share with you the, the results, and I think that'll explain why Jared is saying to, to do nothing, to just stay away from WK Austin may not be the best way to protect the kids. So when, when the traffic study was done with the WK Austin, then it determined that there were no improvements needed along Broad River Road to mitigate for this extra traffic flow. What you would have to do is add a right turn lane for the northbound on WK Austin, so they could get out of the way of the free traffic to turn right. So then when you cut the WK Austin connection, then what we found when we look at it on Broad River Road, is we have to add a right turn lane off of Broad River onto WK Austin, and a left, left turn lane off of Broad River onto WK Austin. So it speaks that the people are going to seek out WK Austin. It's, it's convenient for the traveler, it's got the signal now, and so it's like the people are going to come to that road, is what the numbers are telling us. So a, a thought would be, this development is, is coming, that's in progress, this is soon to start construction, like this month soon. This apartment complex is marching down the road. The, this, this one and this one are walking through the city review, so they're going to be hitting construction probably this year. So that the population's coming, the traffic is going to come, how, how do we manage it the best? And so now, as, as Jared's pointed out, we're ahead of the curve. We can collectively destroy the county and the private sector. How, how can we think our way through to, to preserve the safety on Broad River Road? So one thing would be possibly widen it. So it's a three lane, you have turning movements, add pedestrian pathways along it, so your children coming to and from these apartment complexes that would be potentially walking and biking to school. Jared had mentioned possibly signalization, it, it crosswalks wherever you want the kids to strategically cross. So, so I'm not a traffic guy, I'm just throwing things out, but it does seem like if you just say you're not going to be able to tie into the road, that may not get your goal of protecting the kids. Because then the traffic's coming, but it's going to be unregulated and not planned for. You know, the planning would be at Broad River to make sure they safely get off Broad River, and at 170 to make sure they safely get off 170, but nothing would be done to, to WK Austin. So, so I just offer that as, as some thought. We're ahead of the curve, we know these developments are. We know these developments are coming and, and they're, they're going to seek that access to WK Austin if you give it to them directly or not. So the traffic studies are showing when we looked at it with and without the WK Austin connection. So our ask is if you would consider the connection for this apartment. That's what we're here today for from the private sector. And then look at the bigger picture with the county and how can we development improve WK Austin so it's safe for the kids, safe for the parents coming and dropping off, safe for the buses? And, and yet it can accommodate the traffic that is going to come down. That's our ask. If there's any questions, we'll try to answer.
I think there are a lot of questions. I just have a, a comment. We have three private developments coming in. And what, what I'm hearing and it's, it's, I could be totally wrong, but I'm hearing that let's let the school district and our kids be the ones that have to accommodate these three private industries that are coming in, these three private developments. Because when I look at that, I have great faith in what you both, what you, you can do, what the county can do, what the city can do. And I'm just seeing lots of other avenues that could parallel WK Austin that maybe have not been devised. And, and I don't want to be pushed by three private developments. And I'm, I'm not against development by any means, but I don't think it should be on the backs of our students. And our, you know, and, and I hear what you're saying about by not doing that, that it might be making it worse. I'm just don't, I'm, I'm not there yet, but that's definitely, because I feel like there's been some things that might not have been explored yet. Do you agree? Are there other areas to explore?
Yeah, I mean, we can definitely go back and see if there's other opportunities. Um, and that's the whole part of communicating if somebody has an idea that that's something we had thought about. We can go back and take a look at.
I'm like David. I don't know anything about traffic.
The, the worst, the worst thing is the timing. And, um, so what we're trying to do is get ahead of the curve. Um, whatever we put on the page, whether it's a different road, a, a alternate to WK Austin, a parallel road, um, is not going to take place before the private developments take place. That's just unfortunately the reality.
Yeah, maybe we should have had this conversation five years ago.
That's right. Yeah. Um, but that's, that's where we are today.
Yeah.
And, um, so planning for a future parallel road is definitely something that we can show in the plan. That's again, the plan is used as a template.
Yeah.
Um, but it may not be immediate because private development, people are attracted to our beautiful area and developers are developing property for people to come. And that's going to be here sooner than we're going to have roads built.
Yeah, I was, yeah, there was no impact study done before. These were approved.
So, so maybe speak to all of the comments. Um, some of what you're asking is, is the very reason that, that we're here together. Last time I shared up, I was by myself, right? So we saw all these projects coming and, and, and it's coming out of, of, for the most part, a single property. There's one big piece that's subbed out. All of them were hitting Jared's desk and his counterparts at the city of Beaufort and they said, wow, all this stuff's happening. Let's time out and, and do this overall study. So that's what prompted to go back and look at just what you're saying. Where, where should we be looking for these key roads? Up to this point, the developers have been cooperative. And then they adjusted their plans to fit the, um, road access points that were appointments that are on 170. So I, I think that that can continue to spur cooperation here. Um, I'm not sure what alternate to WK Austin is. We'll have to go back to the drawing board, but we can certainly discuss that with the county.
So, um, I think, are you here for?
Definitely.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, I, I definitely want to say I definitely do, um, agree with, uh, agree with Mrs. Fingers as well as, uh, Mr. Stribinger. Um, you know, uh, we may not be engineers, but it is definitely our job to ensure that we secure the safety of our kids. And I too, uh, definitely have a lot of concerns around what we're, along with what she's talking about. And those developments have not been made before. And I'm sure the city of Beaufort and I'm sure the county would definitely not want to place a value on, uh, I mean, on, on the people who are, who are, on the people who are building these buildings before the kids. I'm sure that we all want to be good neighbors. So I think that we should, we look at this and see where we could possibly, um, put, put these, uh, these, 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 uh, the word is, uh, I guess, I, I, these are outs where, where they can get out safely and, uh, and, and the traffic before traffic can still go by safely and no one will be, uh, will be harmed. Because I'm, I'm sure that all this stuff still has to go by the GOA, the board and all those boards. That's just to go to the, to talk about something that we have here on ladies island, talking about a Dunkin' Donuts. And so that was not just about, and when referenced into the danger of traffic lane, traffic out by the school. So I'm, and, and I, and, and just went to that conversation. And coming here today, there's some areas and so that's, I'm sure that no one will make it. I'm sure.
Um, so how many apartments, I was trying to guess, are, how many people are we talking about? Like specifically the one across the street from the school?
People.
I mean apartment, you have some sort of analysis that says occupancy, right?
So it's 528 units. Uh, but no, I, I don't, I'm sure.
528 units. Okay. Um, and it looks like it's going to be a fairly upscale apartment complex. You've got like a clubhouse and a pool. So, you know, one of the things I was thinking about too is if indeed the pre-traffic's coming and we're going to change the tenor of WK Austin, because right now it's kind of a sleepy little driveway through the trees. You're talking about adding lanes. Um, it would be actually, I think, a really nice, uh, spot for say, you know, young teachers to live and then be able to walk across the street. I don't know what the costs are for these apartments and affordability, but I do think that, you know, in terms of collaborating with the district, I, I think there's some advantages to having a very nice, safe, clean apartment complex across the street if it were to be affordable for, you know, teachers and whatnot, principals, et cetera.
Well, and that might be something working with the county and school districts that we can look at strategically. So development's coming and then we need teachers and we need affordable places for teachers to work and live and play. Um, so I, I don't know if developers look at that at all, but if there's opportunities to preserve some of those units for affordable, maybe not the whole mix, but a portion of that. Um, and then there's, there's impact fees that can be ways that they meet certain thresholds. So there's ways that we at local government and coordinated with school district at large can encourage some percentage of that to be held in reserve for either teachers or people that would support the school.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's a way, that's that creative out of the box, trying to figure out how we make this work with everything that we're given, uh, right now. So I think that's a really great idea. I can definitely bring that up to our administrator and, and potentially Dr. Rodriguez. I know they've been working closely on affordable housing, some discussions.
It looks like a nice conference.
Yeah, well, while Jared takes it to his people, we'll talk to the developers and see what they'd like to stay and what they could do with such, uh, you got much to read more.
Well, just to piggyback off what she said, you know, um, as long, as long as, uh, as long as we are careful and not, developers are just doing something to get this project or get their project approved. Because I like to be careful when it comes to developer, being, doing business with developers. Because, uh, you know, uh, sometimes they massage things to look a certain way. And after they get it fast, you know, so I would want to keep that in forefront too. Not, not just something to get these projects faster, to get this, to get us, or not thinking about what, what was really at stake.
And, and I had, I've just been listening to Steve, but Steve's been working directly with this developer. And so far, they've been, um, very work, working with communities, um, and worthwhile as far as when there's comments made by, this is in the city of Beaufort, when there's comments made, it's just that they've been very accommodating, even to the fact that they've kind of slowed a little bit to help this facilitate, um, such that we can marry up a plan together. So they've been a very, um, neighborly developer. And so that's a, a really good thought that we can bring up. And maybe that's a way for us to collaborate.
Great tenants too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ms. Stribinger, did you have something?
I, I just wanted to ask, you said already, number two and number four on the number map were approved by the city of Beaufort. It was about number six. Is that county or city?
That's city. It's in the process.
They're all three city.
Yes.
Okay.
School districts, county, or school buildings.
Well, yeah, yeah, the other things. Oh, I'm sorry. But they go through the approval process through the city. Okay.
And, uh, Mr. Stribinger has a question as well. Mr. Stribinger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify, because I think we, we've talked about this before, that we would have to grant easements, uh, for, for these accesses, right?
That's right.
Yes.
All right. So we, we've kind of got an ace in the hole here, don't we? Um, we're not going to, yeah, we're not going to grant easements unless we're satisfied that we've done everything we can to protect, protect that school. So, um, just want to establish where, what our position is in this.
Yes, that's right. There would be a, a easement request for those type of connections. But we ascribe to the same mission that, uh, we, we protect the citizens at large, um, some of which are students and teachers. So.
Mr. Earl Campbell, did you have anything? Mr. Mel Campbell?
We both go hand in hand. I mean, like in planning, I can imagine the city of Beaufort, you know, passing those unless they've sorted out all of the issues involved. And, uh, I'm like, in my mind, you, you create that development somewhere else and kind of leave the, that's school, uh, traffic as an individual entity. I mean, but once that, unless you're going to do some timing, things and expect us to do some timing things, the traffic can't go that, well, doing certain hours of the day. You know, in my mind, if it's a private development, then they themselves want their, you know, their dwellers to, to be able to maneuver, you know, kind of conveniently. So not creating some plan ahead of time for that is, you know, it's kind of too hard either. Have people come in moving and then all of a sudden they want to leave because you can't get around. You can't get to the school. You can't get through the school traffic. I mean, I, that's out of our jurisdiction in terms of what we, you know, what we're going to try to protect. That's really in terms of, of flow for, for students and parents going to their school. That's, that's all we can do.
Well, and Steve's.
You haven't convinced us on having an idea that's, you know, that we can buy into. And that's what, that's what, that's what we would be, would be expecting in my mind. I think you all see. That's what we'd be expecting, something that we can say, okay, yes, you're accommodating all of the concerns. I don't see that.
Well, and from the city's standpoint too, so, um, the properties are zoned where they're zoned and it's privately held. So they can't tell somebody, no, you can't build there if what they propose is fits within that zone. And then they can't say, no, you can't connect to that road because they don't own that road. And DOT owns that road. So they get a separate permit with DOT. Um, and as long as they fit within that zone of ordinance is they can construct on their property. Um, so the city and the county are trying to coordinate such that we can facilitate a cohesive, uh, access network, um, although we don't, it's, everybody.
Sorry. Well, I'm with you all over here. Okay, what the system, you know.
I understand what you're saying.
Nothing's going to work, man, any of them unless we work together and get something better.
That's right.
That's the bottom line. Okay, what, what the rules are. If we put something there and it's going to work for everyone concerned, we have to come up with the rules together, a new set of ways of utilizing each of our rights. That's what people do. I mean, that's what's wrong in this situation. DOT is not in a autonomy. They, they have to work with the communities and the communities have to, you know, speak, talk on what they do. But DOT just can't come and answer, are we going to do it with DOT? Community is involved. Community is involved in everything DOT does. And, you know, that's just a different level, but the city of Beaufort, the city of Beaufort, the citizens there are involved. You know, and the schools are important, part of, of that citizenry in my mind.
Well, we need to, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for the time. We appreciate it. And we're going to, we're going to do some improvements and come back.
Excellent.
All right. Thank you all very much. We appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. All right. Moving right along. Um, land consultant, where Robert goes?
He had the soap. Yeah, I'm here. So.
Okay. So we just let Mr. Barry?
Yeah, Al, Al and I have been working together and he's, he's here to kind of give you all an update on what we've been doing.
Thank you, Ms. Barry.
Okay. Thank you very much. Am I coming three? Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me thank the, uh, uh, committee for allowing us to come and present information to you. Uh, it certainly has been a pleasure working with, uh, Carol and, uh, so I would say to you that the information that we are presenting today just didn't start. Uh, there's a process. And just as y'all have heard about the others, uh, in, in our regular school districts in particular, have processes that we go through. Uh, actually, the beginning of my research and where we are today goes back about, uh, six months. And, uh, I would say to you, uh, in regards to the school district, uh, buying property for a school site is not just going out buying land. That's not it. We're buying a, a site that will accommodate hopefully the needs of the students in that particular designed area for the next 50 or 75 years. Certainly the life of a school, uh, facility today probably will go at least 75 years. So it's a major, it's a major consideration to try to look at all the information available to decide, yes, we believe these are sites that need full consideration. Now, I would say to you that as we began this particular search, as you are aware and you've just heard, uh, the development in Beaufort County has been tremendous. Uh, I would say is a benchmark, uh, since my retirement as assistant superintendent of schools in, in Lexington. Uh, people, school districts all over the state have called on me to help them in the location and the purchase of a school site. Uh, I have an undergraduate degree in agriculture. It involves soils and surveying. And I've been a licensed surveyor, a licensed contractor and, uh, and now for the last 35 years, a licensed broker. So anyhow, for those reasons and being a school administrator for 32 years, so, uh, during this time too, has given me some valuable experiences and, and, uh, so your situation, I would say to you, is not unique. Uh, I'm involved right now in the upstate. Finding property is very, very difficult. And as we all would recognize, it's not going to get easier because the developments are coming in, they're buying up the properties, they're locking them in for their immediate needs as well as long-term needs. So I reference to you that I've been back for the last six, about six months when ago, when I started this research. And thankfully to the counties today, they have online so much information in regards to properties and their characteristics. And, uh, so I'm able to analyze sites a great deal so that, uh, we make certain before I get involved with a site that I feel like if we want to do diligence is done, that yes, I believe it would satisfy the requirement. Yes, DOT is involved with this. Uh, in order to gain two access points to a school site, you need clear visibility. And, uh, for probably 1,400 feet to get two access points. So all of these, and you can see immediately how that begins to narrow the scope. And so as we look at practice today... And so as we look at practice today, we're talking about basically very seldom can you just buy one piece of property. You have to buy multiple pieces and pull them together in order to satisfy those particular, uh, uh, issues that, uh... So that you can get approval ultimately in the end from the State Department of Education, the Office of School Facilities, as well as DOT. All of those approvals need to be in hand. And so in terms of the process, where I am today with Carol, from there, we want your committee and the school board to say, yes, we think you're on track, and go ahead to the next step. Now, from the research that's done to this point, I initially identified seven sites within the area in which we're looking to satisfy student growth in the area. And Carol has been so helpful, so helpful. I put her in the top of the ladder of working throughout the state. Uh, but she's pulled student data. Uh, four years ago, in a one-mile radius of each site that I've looked at, two miles radius of each site, from that one to two-mile radius, and from two to three-mile radius. So we know how many elementary students in that radius of each of those, how many middle students are there, and how many high school students are there. Now, I was involved with the May River site several years back, and I know you have a middle school site projection for that, and, uh... But that was banked. And so while the sites today may not have an immediate use, uh, certainly they need to be banked while there's some availability of property uh, in the bluffed-in area which we're looking today. So after we get the nod to move forward, yes, I said seven, and I will say to you, after the research to this point, we found that one of them's already in pre-development approval stages right now. So actually, at best, we had, we're down to six. We could find out that some of those are also gone. But once we get the nod to move forward, then I will start making contact with property owners uh, to introduce ourselves to them, uh, and on behalf of the school district, and would ask that they give consideration to give us an audience that we might begin the discussion. When in the end of those discussions, if we come up with some agreements of terms, then we would do an agreement, a purchase agreement for that particular piece of property. And that would be conditional, conditional that we do all the due diligence that we need. In other words, uh, through the years, I've developed criteria for each type of school site. I have criteria of about eleven items that I have for checkoff list to make certain they are satisfied. And in your particular area, certainly an emphasis would be on wetland areas, uh, the issue of water, high water levels. Uh, when I look at your area, basically, I'm looking at properties that would have a topo of at least probably it's minimum fifteen, but hopefully twenty above. And so I look at all the topo information. Uh, I look at any type of activity on that site that would be detrimental for students and their safety there. Uh, I look at transmission lines, I look at gas lines, I look at railroad, uh, places where there's dumps. So anything that we feel like it would potentially provide a negative impact for students, we certainly are very, very concerned about their safety. Uh, I tell people, well, what'd you pay for a piece of property? And my response to that, when you compare in properties, in my opinion, and I've been a licensed contractor too, you have to compare figures based on when can you get the site at a stage you could pour the first yard of concrete. In other words, you may get a piece of property that you're dealing with the property owner is lower per acre, but it's going to cost you so much for site development that it runs the price way up. So I try to compare, and I do some cost analysis of that, trying to project what is the best piece of property that would satisfy us. But again, I go back to this thought, it's not buying a piece of property, building some apartments on, in two or three years, you away and gone, and that's it. We're buying it for a school site. It's going to have a use factor of fifty to seventy-five years. Uh, I also look at the configuration of the site. Not only I've talked about the road frontage, but basically for an elementary site, I would like to have uh, in the neighborhood of about eight hundred feet in depth and maybe twelve, thirteen, fourteen feet in width. But anyhow, I try to look at a model there of a school and how it sits. Uh, then you got to look at, uh, sites are so different now than they were twenty or thirty years ago because you have so much access by parents coming in for drop-off and pick-up of students, so you have to have stacking lanes and, uh, those types of things. So this is what I call due diligence. And then, of course, we would have an attorney to research title to make sure there's no encumbrances or things that would hinder the school district in its use. When all of those are satisfied, and that takes time, typically, I tell school districts, uh, it's going to take from a year to fifteen to sixteen months to actually be able to close on a piece of property, to get all of those things taken care of. Now, things may fall in place, you can get it done in eight months or nine months. But when you're coordinating people to come in, writing proposals for surveying topos, wetland studies, archaeological studies, all of those kind of studies, and getting competitive bids with it, and then getting all of those services rendered, it just takes a lot of time. So I'm just trying to give you an idea of what all's involved as we do this kind of thing. So that sort of gives you an oversight as to where we are today and what would lie ahead once we get approval to move forward. But as I see it right now, there would be no more, as I said, we identified seven, but now we have found out that one of those is already in pre- approval for some type of redevelopment. But for the six remaining, I feel like each of them have potential. Uh, we're looking for an elementary and a middle school. Some of those sites would not satisfy middle school. Uh, so, yeah, the six, uh... You do not have six potential sites for a middle school. That's assuming you're able to get to a point of agreement with the property owners. So that gives you an oversight as to the process that I'm doing, and I would be happy to entertain any questions. I thank you all so very much for letting me come and meet with you. And if I could take a point of privilege, I want to tell Mr. Earl Campbell, my wife sends my regard to her, to him. Uh, she was a former Executive Director of State School Boards Association. So, Mr. Campbell, best wishes to you. It's always a pleasure to see you.
Do we have any questions?
Didn't mention anything about where the six locations were.
That's surprising. Yeah, I don't think we're...
Then get that part in.
Mr. Barry, are you at a point where you would bring to this board the locations? Are you still kind of waiting on that?
That's an excellent question. Let me tell you my experiences in dealing with this. Uh, I would prefer not doing that.
That's fine. He has more questions, sir.
Yeah.
What's... Yeah, excuse me.
That's concerning, the property that you have, you know, targeted, because I want to, or guess I should ask Robert this. Did he give you any directives on what he's looking for? And you mentioned elementary and middle school as the properties, but, you know, is that what they're looking for from a perspective of...
That's what the district has advised me right now. Uh, they're looking at properties at least for the elementary and the middle, uh, and it, you know, that may be expanded, but that's the immediate push right now.
Because, yeah, I mean, you have a mission, then you can't find what we're looking for. If you find properties and we can't utilize it in our strategic planning in the long run, then there's no mesh. So I'm just, you know, planting seeds at this, that we ought to know where we're going so we can pick up on what we're going to get.
Yeah, I think you mentioned this, Crutchfield's been working with him a lot. Uh, Mr. Schribinger, do you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Al, you mentioned a couple times you are looking for approval to take the next step. What is that next step you need approval for?
Well, uh, it, my experiences, uh, I have made a presentation similar to this to the board in executive session, and basically, this is what I say in the end. Unless I hear any objections, we will move forward now and trying to negotiate for this elementary and this immediate, uh, middle school need uh, in this particular area. And I would tell them that we have predetermined in earlier search that we think there might be six potential sites out there would satisfy one or both of these needs. And if they don't say no, don't do that. We're not looking for a vote. We're just trying to praise them, and if they have an issue with it, you know, put us at stop, and let's get, be, make sure we're all on the same boat.
So, Mr. Barry?
The next step is executive session?
Yes, that's what I tip, that's what I recommend. And then after we get through with all of that and done all the due diligence, we got all the approvals, then I would go back to the board executive session and with the administration, and the administration would bring a recommendation to present to you, the board, and say, we move that the board gives the school district authority to move forward with this purchase of this piece of property.
Uh, Mr. Smith has a question?
Um, hearing what you're saying, um, I do have some concerns in terms of moving forward, and I'm kind of almost lost to why we're where we are at when, uh, within our last meeting. I believe that we were talking, we mentioned some different facilities. And I'm just, me personally, I'm just not certain that, uh, we are there yet for board, but maybe others are, maybe others are. But I do, I do have some bit of concern because I almost feel like, um, a little disrespect to you that it's kind of blind side. Like this is kind of a blind sign today, coming forward with these updates, and you seem like you're ready to go out and possibly, uh, have some, a couple places for land, so, uh, that's, yeah, that's where I'm at as a committee member. I've not been as committed for years now, so.
Well, I think that I'm going to try and pull it up. I do believe that there was a motion out of Operations Committee to have a land consultant go out, identify some parcels, and bring it back. So that's the point we're at. He's identified some parcels, and as I understand it, Mr. Barry, correct me if I'm wrong, you're ready now, you're at the point now where we, the next, we need to do the executive session soon, um, maybe even the next meeting. Does that sound right, Carol?
Yeah, it'd be wonderful.
And this is, I will try and find you the land consultant motion and send it to you because I do recall that was done several months ago.
And so, and this is, and this vantage particularly to the, um, the North of the Broad.
No, this is...
I meant South of the Broad.
Correct. Just one.
But would this not be before we lost all those students? When was that motion taking place?
I will, I will find it for you. How about this, because we're almost out of time, let me find the motion, and we'll circle back to it.
Right, because, and my concerns is, I remember, you know, we made the motion when when we had those students, that's one thing, but if we made this motion after we lost all those students and some of those students didn't get back...
It was Tuesday, August seventeenth.
Yeah, yes, I, this is something we need to read into the other board.
Well, we can, let's have, I think the right thing to do personally would be to bring it to the full board in executive session.
I agree.
So do we have... Oh, Mr. Schribinger?
I have nothing. I just wanted, I just wanted to get us to the next step.
Yeah, is there, do we have a motion to bring this, to bring Mr. Barry's presentation to executive session at our next board meeting, summoned? Let Robin type all that in.
Motion to bring Mr. Barry's recommendation to the executive board, to the president.
That's fine. And it was Ms. Fidrich, second by Mr. Campbell, all in favor? And so I guess it's unanimous. All right, thank you, Mr. Barry.
Thank you, thanks to each of you for your service that you rendered to your school district down in Beaufort County. Thank you kindly.
All right, we have eleven minutes. Do you want to just zing through, Mr. Sherman?
We can do it in a few minutes.
Okay, and then we'll have the full construction update at the clock, right? We need to stick around.
And the only other thing we have is the maintenance kind of update. You know, if we run out of time, we can put it...
We just have to next month.
That's okay. That's kind of where we are. I don't think we're going to make those.
Good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity to provide the lovely construction update. Uh, as previously communicated over the past few months, longly times for the various construction-related materials continue to feel a challenge as a result of COVID supply chain issues. Project managers continue to do an excellent job of finding solutions to the challenges keeping the school administration team well informed. Uh, there are a total of three yellow traffic lights in the project updates this month. Uh, that figure is down from the six that we reported last month. The three traffic lights that are in the report are Slide Six. That's associated with Battery Creek High School. The renovation schedule concerns associated with material delays. And I will also add quickly that we learned today that OSF, Office of School Facilities, notified our office that the inspection for Building D, that's the classroom wing on the east side of the main campus here, that the scheduled OSF inspection will not occur on February sixteenth. They have now rescheduled it February twenty-fourth, and our original plan was to reoccupy that wing sometime the week of February twenty-first. So right now, we've got a little bit of an impact that will postpone re-occupancy of the D Wing by staffing students. Uh, Slide Twenty-Six, the yellow light there at Hilton Head Island Middle School, that's associated with budget concerns that we previously highlighted. And Slide Forty, the addition of the athletics at Beaufort High School, those additional fire doors that we spoke of last month that needed to be added based on the OSF inspector. Door frames have arrived, but we're trying to track down where the two door panels are, and as soon as we can get those, we'll get them installed. Uh, jumping forward to project closeouts, Slide Sixty-Three, we are now reporting seven projects where project closeouts are being completed. This is up from the four that was reported last month. Uh, and we have six projects that are yellow lighted still. We're down to one remaining item. That item is associated with something that... That item is associated with something that prepared by the designer. We have reached back out to the designer to try to expedite that across the finish line. We do continue to address project closeouts on a weekly basis. Actual referendum, financial expenditures through the end of January, now total just under $99 million. I will point out that the report does include an updated cash flow model. Working with financial services, Ms. Tanya Crosby had a request that not only did she receive information for the referendum cash flow, but also on the 8%. So what we did was took the opportunity to provide that detail and then adjust to make sure that we've got the most accurate data for the referendum. And lastly, community outreach yesterday. Hilton Head Island Middle School, we held the School Improvement Council Review Meeting. I think that it was a meeting that was well attended. We had close to 30 attendees. LS3P, the designer of record, helped did a good job of recapping what their scope was as well as changes from existing conditions to what the final product will look like, as well as some good visionary renderings that were shared during the presentation. And at the end, right around 6 o'clock, the meeting lasted about an hour and then we opened up for Q and A. And I think we had some good questions that came in as well. And I know, Ms. Brogright, you were at it. I don't know if you'd like to add anything or any comments, but that sort of concludes it for the.
Yeah, it wasn't that meeting. It was a great meeting. I did get the impression that the final cost value and everything, are the CD documents that we've done?
We'll bring that to the board.
So are you having a community before that occurs or after? Are there going to be any more value?
We're not going to make this board meeting because we're already not on the schedule. So our hope, I think our hope would be to make the first meeting in March.
Yeah, either the first or second. And I know that our original plan following the SIC meeting was to move forward and coordinate, schedule the whole community meeting. So we're trying to facilitate that information as well. But timing wise, like Robert said, if we can bring the information to the full board in March, that would be the schedule that we're trying to manage.
So now I'm going to open up to questions, but I have one comment specific to the, I think we need to put a yellow traffic light on at Hilton Head and talk about the fact that we're still, that we're delayed because it's out there in the community that, you know, the track has not yet reopened. It's February 9th. I know it's the full weather and everything, but I think we need a yellow traffic light so at least that they have an opportunity to hear about that. And then are there any questions? It's Ms. Fidrich.
Okay, so Ms. Brogright just had a couple of questions. On slide five, a fire pump has not arrived at Beaverdale. Contractor was misled by fire pumps prior. Can you just say a little more about that?
Yeah, I don't know what else I could elaborate further. Somebody basically told us the story and the only time I like the stories at bedtime.
Okay, all right, so that's an intentional word. All right, so slide number 10.
Saying we had an optimistic supply.
That word certainly, it didn't sound very contract.
You can tell the project manager who put that in is not happy with the fact that it's late.
Slide 10, J E Dunn is putting on sharing contract buyout details prior to end of February. Can you just explain that?
Whenever we have a guarantee maximum price amendment, one of the natural steps that takes place is following the award and execution of that, they then go back to all the various vendors that provided proposals and then they put each of them under contract between J E Dunn and that vendor for the various bid packages that they're locking in. And what that is, is they were just wanting to let us know that this update on the contract buyout is something that they're looking to pass along to us before the end of February itself.
I just don't remember seeing that bullet on all the other amendments and things we've ever done. It's new terminology, I think.
It may be the first time that I put it on there, but it is something that is typical with the C M at risk delivery model.
Okay, and then lastly, can you just say why did the OSF have to rescede it?
Do not find out that answer yet. The news is from.
Well, I know they're in control. If their schedule changes, they'll tell us.
It wasn't actually anymore.
No, 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 it wasn't on our end. It was something that came from their office to us and I would only speculate and I hate to do that.
Personnel, who knows? Okay, all right, thank you.
With the bleachers replacement at Beaver High School on slide 40, who is, where did they get the bleachers from and the designs and all that stuff? Where did that come from?
I mean, the designs were, I know were run through the school, so that was.
And LS3P is the designer of record, so that any cementals would have gone through their office for review and approval.
So, so can you tell me what's that process like? Because I.
I know where you're, yes, I know you're kind of, your questions or concerns. So as far as.
Where are they?
About the eagle and what eagle was used?
Well, not, I'm going to let you go ahead.
No, so the process is, well, first off, we would have asked the school for what logo or what their symbol is that they'd like us to use. We'd send that off to the bleacher supplier. The bleacher supplier then would give us a proof of what it looks like. That would be taken to the school for review and they would sign off on it. And that would give it to the contractor, we'd then order it. Once it's ordered, you know, it would come in and I don't know if you remember, but this is the logo where it was peeling off, so it had to be redone. So this is the second version of that logo due to the first one had some quality issues that caused us to ask them to replace it.
Well, not just that, I think that, and it concerned me that I think that should come before the board because as well as not just the logo, the color of the bleachers and the whole scheme of the school has been brought to my attention. And I attended a game and I was swatting, I was shocked to see gray bleachers in Beaver High School, his green and white. And you know, I'm not sure, this has been a, from my understanding, this has been brought to my attention. This has been an ongoing situation now with the changing of the mascot as well as the colors of the school. And to see gray bleachers at Beaver High School, that does not sit well with the community. And I think something that should come before this committee and as well as the board because that is indirectly, it seems to be changing the identity of that school. And then that is a concern in the community that we have done.
I think what you happen to do, you can make a motion to bring it to the full board, but I will tell you right off that I'm going to support that because to me it's way too operational. It's too minor details as far as.
Let me finish. I'm not, in terms of looking for people on this board to understand that I'm just, but what I am saying is that as a board member, it is no different if we, I remember this same committee right here, last year, I think it was River Ridge Academy bought a guy that was, and he had a sword. And this committee at that time, David Schmusskrimm was on. And then I remember we, this committee approved it and went to the full board and the board said, oh no, we don't like the sword, no, we don't like that. And that was kind of, people could say that was kind of, oh, let me finish. People could say that that was kind of operationable. But what I'm saying is that we serve the community as tax person as well as when we start, when we start to change in our history, and then we have to be, we have to give the community a chance to address that. And as a representative of that community, I'm telling, what I'm saying that I've been getting phone calls and I went there myself as a graduate of Beaver High School, I do see a bit of concern with that. So I'm just bringing it to this committee and asking what was the process of it? Not, so that I can understand it, but I can know when it comes forward. So that's the only thing.
We mask out there in our policy manual, it's board thirty specifically. I think you should make your motion about the bleacher colors if we want to bring, yes.
I'll just say the one difference was River Ridge did not have a mascot.
But it is specifically laid out, but we approved mascot.
What they had was they had a shield. And so they brought forward the concept of a knight. And so their suggestion was for the mascot of the knight. And then they did bring examples of what they wanted to do and the board had input on that.
Well, and it's in our policy that we approve the mascot. But if you want to make a motion, we can certainly entertain a motion if you want to bring the changes to the Beaver High Gym to the full board.
No, I mean, I'm still, I want to still, in the rest of our learn, ask questions before I do that. And then also I've been, I've encouraged the community, if you have some concern as well, they can bring their concerns as well.
Absolutely.
So, yeah.
I will say, just so you know, it's something that we're working on actively. Well, we're, we've been in conversations with several people about many of the issues there. So we are actively working.
Why, this is news to me. And for me, it was shocking walking in and seeing that, being a guy at Beaver High School, that is definitely a problem, problem. I mean, that's just, that's just, you know.
While we get done, we can talk about some of the.
All right, it is, we are two minutes past. If no one has any other questions, do we have a motion to adjourn? And we'll just email about future gym questions.
Yes, that, sorry, Ed, we didn't get to. So that'll be fine. If I can do just 30 seconds. So I guess just to summarize, we are making great strides with maintenance. We're moving forward with our cards. We're implementing the visits that we're having monthly at the schools. That's two in October, November, those have been very successful. Ed's been moving forward with all his supervisors, meeting with the schools, having a lot of luck. Good progress with that. Any big topics else you want to add, Ed?
Having a good turnout with the principal, we're getting feedback. It's been productive meeting.
I think we're making good progress. Be glad to come and report next time.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?